We got Monday, June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Well, you are in session of the Board of Supervisors, Chickasaw County. Recall this is a convene, roll call, all members are present, along with Board Secretary Tua Shetland. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda, June twenty-third?
So.
Good. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Approve the minutes for June sixteenth, last Monday's meeting.
Very much to approve.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by I, to approve the minutes of June sixteenth. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we oppose, motion carried. Move down to a very quick one, I think. Reveal and appoint a county commission of Veterans Affairs Board members. Um, so we all know that those terms expire on June thirtieth. Katie Beamer and Dean Spiker. Um, it looks like those two did reapply um, in your packet on Friday. Um, it is for a three-year term. And the board has not said anything. They serve different branches of the military. So I would recommend if you guys move to approve Katie Beamer and Dean Snyder as sorry, Dean Spiker for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Boom.
Sorry. Motion by Travis, second by Scott, to approve the appointment to the County Commission of Veterans Affairs, Dean Spiker and Katie Beamer for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion is carried. This will be another quick one, discuss the twenty in the agreement with County Social Services, CSS. We had an executive meeting on Thursday that this Wednesday will be acting on some twenty-eightees with ISAC for CSS. And then it was brought up that maybe we should also terminate our twenty-eightee with County Social Services. The attorney for CSS, which is Neighbors McCooney, has not got me a copy of the twenty-eightee termination, so I don't know if we should act on it, wait until Monday, maybe. And it's just gonna state that we, Chickasaw County, would like to get out of the twenty-eightee just so the state of Iowa has nothing to do with us. I think you guys got a copy of the current twenty-eightee, if you didn't, on page one, three point two, termination. The term of disagreement shall be perpetual unless terminated by a repeal or amendment of the Iowa Code Section on Resolved and the Elimination of a requirement for mental health services to be provided through a regional format and be a majority of the member counties approved termination of the region. Um, so I did visit with county attorney about this. I think since we don't have a copy of the termination, I'm just giving you guys an update and maybe we should vote on it next Monday to terminate at eleven fifty-nine on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, being a member of the CSS region. Pretty much just for your information as of right now, since I don't have a most likely, the CSS Board will vote on that on Wednesday. Uh, so then it goes back to the twelve counties to terminate it. Any questions with that twenty-eightee agreement? Otherwise, I got nine oh five, I think Supervisor Carter had a public comment.
Yeah, so a citizen approached you about volunteer worker for chat promoting and weed pulling. And he's bringing up on volunteer agreement that I will not receive any compensation for my volunteer work and that volunteers are not considered Chickasaw County Conservation Board employees for any purpose. While I get the same, uh, the verbiage is very clear, he's concerned about a candy cycle he's receiving. So he's looking at that as compensation. And I get that, but I do think the position is needed. You can't have the director going thirty-four hours a week. So I don't know how we address this. That's a ten ninety-nine, do we? For the
So I was aware of this last week. I already talked to Ann, our HR attorney, and I had a call on due list with our so we'll get a response and get a public response since you brought it up today. As we get an answer. Okay, it's being looked into.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Appoint a world board member. Was there any other public comment?
No.
No, perfect. Appoint a world board member to the Pan, whatever you pronounce that. Library Board, I think this is the one from Frexford. She would be able to explain.
Well, I received a call from Jackie Kesch um, from the Upton, Frexford, uh, Library. And she said that um, Dr. Brad was holding off the board, so we needed to appoint another world person. She has two people that she had gave the uh, over the phone. She said she was gonna follow it up with a letter so that we all had the same information, but I never received this letter. So, but her first choice was Lacy Kelly and she had a second choice jail person. So I don't know how long the term of this board is.
Yeah, yeah, so she would approach me last Wednesday, Thursday. We talked to Jackie on Friday. Um, we got the two names, but we had no application, we had more term to fill Joe current position on that library board. Um, as a trustee. Again, we might not have enough information to act on it today. Uh, the board is still in control of four other members, even if Joe decided to move on. Unless you guys, I don't have nothing, we don't.
We don't, I, she said she sent um, an email to Jake and I, neither of one of us received it. And then I said, well, could you please just send it again? And she said she would, and I haven't received it. But we had, if I did receive it, it would have been with her, just on the agenda, but now that I didn't receive it, so maybe I shouldn't have put it on the agenda.
We don't know that, though, this is, yeah, we get it out and this is what happens. Again, this item will be moved on to next week just because we don't have
Lack of information.
Fair enough. Approved application for fireworks permit. Their request for fireworks, she has all the information.
From Sarah Sherman. And she was, um her group is J and M Displays. And um, they're supposed to be an event on July fourth, two thousand twenty-five, they're expecting two hundred people, and so she wanted to, um
Will be at the New Hampton Golf and Country Club?
Yes.
She is a certified, um person to shoot off these fireworks.
She's
It's been authorized, it's been insuranceed, um
Certified
Yeah.
A display operator.
The only thing that's pending our ordinance, I guess, is the fifty dollars. Um, I believe it was gonna be paid for by Chuck Staley. But he is not, I think, in the state right now, but I know. So I guess if you guys wanna approve this, pending the fifty-dollar application. Got any other questions on this? Fireworks permit.
I think a motion to approve the fireworks application for J and M Displays, Sheriff Sherman, pending payment.
I'll second. Motion by Scott, second by I, to approve the fireworks permit pending the fifty-dollar payment for J and M Displays. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody approve? Oppose? Motion is carried.
Before you leave this topic, one of the bills that passed this year did change the fireworks shooting times, the ability to regulate those, but I did check a week ago when it got passed, and some of the ordinance isn't compliant with it. So you don't have anything to change it here, I mean, it's compliant with it.
Perfect. Do we still collide with fees?
Yes, yes, yep, it was basically prerogative of your ability to regulate them as tightly on July third and fourth and lead December thirty-first as far as hours and regulations for consumer fireworks. But you're already compliant with it.
All right, I got nine oh eleven, it's a meeting with Hopkins and entrepreneur P C, Attorney Brent Henderson. Good morning, Brent.
Good morning.
Um, so we all know, just for recap, people watching or Department Head Team. Um, we received three RFPs last week, we opened them in public session. Um, and this week, all three will be with us, I hope.
I just thought that.
You just thought that?
Yeah.
This is a firewall, though, you can see my live stream, it's still going.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. This is why I'm checking here.
Yes, we are? She said she didn't press it.
Sorry about that, just wanna make sure we're here, still no live stream. So yeah, we got RFPs from three contract people. Um, Brent is the first one, so good morning, Brent.
Hey, good morning, I handed out my packet every morning, I pass it down. Uh, this is the packet that we presented as part of our RFP. Um, I just wanna get you another copy, 'cause I never know uh, whether you have one or not. Uh, generally, uh, speaking, uh we, we went through, um, all the different requirements, everything you're asked for, we do this for lots of different uh, counties, lots of different cities, happy to do it for Chickasaw. Uh, you know, really, uh, the big thing is, is to be a uh, really, an additional supplement consultation with, with your elected officials. We're not elected officials, we're not going to, uh, sit there and and try to force elected officials to do things, but the bottom line is, we want to keep you out of litigation. That is, that is the bottom line, and I know that there are, uh, there are groups out there, I, I've worked with them uh, and, and work for their clients that, that aren't as concentrated on keeping you out of litigation. Um, that's, uh that is my biggest concentration here is, because litigation just isn't about that deductible. Litigation just isn't about, uh, you know, um, making, making a decision at that moment. I mean, it can affect people's careers, it can affect people's reputations in communities, and I have a real appreciation for that. Um, and especially in smaller communities, so uh, you know, we're not that bad a thousand on that. By hiring me, you're not, I'm, I'm not going to somehow put up some sort of force field that you never get sued for anything ever again. Uh, it's, it, you know, that might happen, but I wanna position you and all the different elected officials in the county the best way possible. And you have all sorts of different boards, uh, uh, commissions, those sorts of things, they're going to have a lot of different needs. Uh, a lot of different issues. And, and I, you know, the other part is, uh, to be a supplement to your county attorney. Um, you know, work with your county attorney on any issues that might come up uh, legally and, and, you know, um, and, and just be able to help in that fashion, but folks, that's, that's why, I can, I can talk all day about my experience or, or what I do in other places. Happy to give you that information, but and, uh, we, and it's not just uh, we have a, we have approved about nine of us uh, that work in, in these sorts of areas. Uh, you'd have access to all those people and, and, uh, you know, really, our concentration there is also timeliness in getting back to you if you have an issue. Uh, and, and you're calling an attorney, that means that uh, and, and especially on HR, that, that means it needs to get done now. Uh, and we have very, uh, we have a great track record of responsiveness and, and, uh, and helping out in that fashion, so happy to answer any questions, folks.
Question I had. You put a ten-hour per month on there. Do you think your clients reach those ten hours, do they go over the ten hours?
Some, so it kind of depends, and I'll have clients, I'll switch back and forth of, uh, you know, that they want that ten hours in there. And to me, the ten hours, to me, is more for budget purposes than anything. Uh, a lot of clients like to have the ten hours. If not we can just do a straight hourly arrangement, that's perfectly fine, too. It's, it's whatever you want to do, it's from second, so I don't have a preference there, it's, it's more for convenience sake. But a lot of municipalities just like having the, knowing that it's, you know, whatever, whatever, every month, boom, boom, boom. And, but I would say, except, well it's kind of interesting, 'cause sometimes you won't make ten hours in a month, but if you do like a hundred and twenty hours a year, and then you get to the end of the year and they go, oh, okay, well, come up here and do trainings. Come up here and do, you know, review the handbook, you know, so you kind of wait till that last couple of months, because I don't you know, if, if you don't use the ten, ten hours in the month, I don't say, you know, uh, it's zeroed out at the end of every month. It's, it's a hundred and twenty hours, so a lot of times people go, oh, well, I've got a hundred hours this year, or I've got eighty hours this year. I want you to work on this project, I want you to come up here and do trainings on things, or, or do something like that, so that's, that's normally how that works, but to me, that's more, uh, yeah, you know, it, it's sort of what you wanna do there as far as billing and, and, uh and cost, but I don't really have a preference there.
Can I follow up on that? Cause I've been at this here, so I have a lot of my questions, too, as far as I've seen this, but so you're saying it's a hundred and twenty hours per year, not ten hours?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's ten hours a month equalling out to a hundred and, hundred and twenty a year, but it's not, like, every month doesn't if you don't use it, you lose it, sort of thing, it's you keep it, you know, so we just have a running total limit.
So, and then anything above that, you are gonna bill us hourly?
Yeah, but then if you go above the hundred and twenty, we bill you out.
So do we wait to the, uh, the, um, in December or the end of the fiscal year to figure out if we went over? Or are you gonna see?
Oh, no, we, we give you a, we give you a running total every month. Um, you know, and that, so you'll, you'll get the same sort of monthly bill, you'll just know, hey, this is what your total is.
But you won't increase the monthly bill because, say we were, and we used twelve hours?
No, 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 you, you'll just, it'll just, yeah, it'll just get subtracted from the next month, that sort of thing.
And they will make it right at the end of the fiscal year, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
As far as like our handbook, would you be, like telling us, like, hey, you need to add, you need to add books, like, this is new this year. You need to, like, the pregnancy, that type of thing, 'cause like, right now
Yeah.
we're missing a lot of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, I'm not gonna do anything I'm not asked to do, but if you, if you say, hey, Brett, take a look at the handbook? Absolutely, I'm gonna sit down, I'm gonna go through the handbook. I mean, ideally, what I like to do is I like to go through all your handbooks, all your policies, and all your job descriptions right at the beginning and say, you know, here, we need to change this, or, you know, maybe you need to, we need to go re-interview people as far as job, you know, as far as job descriptions, or these good job descriptions.
And I've learned that in your seminars, because you provide the seminars, well, for free.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know really any department heads or board members that have attended, I pretty much listened to all of them, I'm a better, and
Well, good, thank you.
Yeah, I, I've learned a lot.
Yeah.
And I know that we really need assistance.
Yeah, and, and to me, you know, I, I, you, you know, I, I will go on hours and hours about handbooks, policy, job description, because those are the things that, that make it possible, uh, you know, to really well, I mean, discipline to enforce, and also it's, it's, it's requirements, I mean, if you're ever audited by the Department of Labor, you're at it, you know, all those different things, it's just necessary. Now, so, a lot of what, you know, governments are gonna run into, is a lot of the jobs are defined under the, under the code. It's great, but you also want to then have a job description that, that mirrors the code. And, you know, especially with sheriff's departments, there's usually lots of different iterations of what a deputy looks like. And, or, you know, or jail personnel, and those sorts of things, and you need to uh, make sure that those are in line and that people are doing uh, the job, that's the one I see the most, uh, of, of where you know, you're trying to force someone doing a job, and it's, no, I don't do that. And, and those, those can run into real sticky situations there.
Then is there someone that is so like, let's say that we have someone in a department, like, let's say myself, and I have an issue with my department head.
Mm-hmm.
Like, right now, we don't have anywhere to go. So would there be someone, like, available?
Yeah.
That we would be able to, that employee would be able to go to, like, confidentially and not have uh big fat cloud shove?
Yeah, and that would be, I mean, usually what, what, the way that it's written then in your policies would be, you know, HR person, or, or however you wanted to term what, what my job was, they'd reach out and contact me about that and we'd go through the complaint process and everything there.
I just gave a, a, a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, our state association, we utilize Eric Draper.
Yeah.
For our state association, and he's done a great good job for us.
Eric, Eric, Eric's a great guy, you know, one door down from me, so yeah.
You said you have Hopkins Keen there for here?
Eric Draper, who's a
Yeah, part area, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh
Yeah, I'm staying here, I learned, look, being safety coordinator, there's been a lot of stuff that's been brought to my attention.
Yeah. Well, and county safety, OSHA, all that stuff is, I mean well, those are, those are huge issues, huge liabilities, so I mean, that's
So your experience with the day is through Harvard, I presume?
Yes.
Present presentations?
That, and you do the Hopkins Keen, they're, no, the Hopkins Keen, the, the climate seminar.
Yeah, yeah, no, we just do it privately. Um, let's see, uh, we do that, we speak at ISAC. Uh, this week I'm speaking at the, uh Auditors Conference, ISAC, uh, spoke two weeks ago at the State Treasurers. Probably longer than that, uh, not three weeks ago, at the Treasurers, so we, we do a lot of, a lot of speaking, our presentation.
Two, I believe it's two seminars, yeah?
Yeah, we do two seminars.
And then we do Zoom, so that's what I appreciate, 'cause I really attract guys to the point.
Yeah, you, you can come in person or do Zoom, people ask different preferences. Um, yeah, but we always do that with our clients every, every year, so
So what type of conflict, if any, would that present, if you're representing us immediately upon uh, investigation or addition, dealing with HR issues, and then somehow gets turned over to Harvard, we have a Harvard attorney as well, what type of conflict, if any, does that present?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's where, that's why I was really thinking about, and I talked to Judy about it, and I don't see any immediate uh, conflict there as far as, because if we had an investigation or something like that, I think I could still, you know, we could at least uh, wall off of, this is what I'm doing in this capacity, and this is what I'm doing in this capacity. And I would tell you that ninety percent of the time, um, what I'm, what I'm gonna do is probably going to be more, uh, in line with representing the county, I mean it's one in, I think, your one situation here, uh, was a little bit different, but that's, that's, that's unique. Um, and also, I don't think that there's an actual, I don't think that's an actual conflict there, as long as
I recall.
Yeah, as lo, as long as everybody's okay saying, hey, this is the, this is the role here, but I just don't see that coming out, like um, yeah, it's, that's, that was unusual, so
Did you, in this proposal, does that also include, or, um, union contracts, negotiations?
Yes, yes. Yep. Yeah, all that. How, how many unions do you have?
We had two, so, it's like Mary Rhodes, and just very one page.
Yeah.
And then the sheriff's union.
Yep. Yeah. Uh, I, you know, uh, I'm gonna go start union negotiation on one, on Thursday, in a, in a town not far from here, you know? I had picked up a community a year ago, uh, they had all three of their unions going for renegotiation, uh, that year, uh, so I hope we don't have the same situation.
No, our two actually just got done last week.
Oh, that's great.
We are in the current first year.
Yeah.
Three-year contract.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions, board members, or?
Any agreements, hearings, anything like that, too?
Yeah. Normal travel expense.
Yeah.
Per regal.
Yeah, and, you know, a big thing with travel, I, I know, a lot of people get concerned about that anymore, I try to you know, I have a lot of clients on this side of the state, so I try to put everything together, so, you know, not one group is, is, uh, you know, bearing the brunt of the, the travel expense or anything, so
Uh, question. If a department head team or staff has a question, are you the head contact of the county?
Yep.
Gotta know if anybody else, like, another partner or associate?
It's all gotta run for me, uh, so, you know, it might be that I, I, I say, hey, you know, I can't deal with this right now. You take it, but I wanna be involved, you know, I wanna be, uh, a part of it and, and kind of circle back on, and, yeah. Cause again, to me, it's more about timeliness of these, of these issues than, than who's, who's handling it and that sort of thing.
Just a question for the old Department Head Team, too. Um, if a phone card email was sent, what's been your past response to?
Um, you know, out, usually the outside number is twenty-four hours, but honestly, most of the times, it's, it's within the day or in a couple of hours. Um, especially if we're talking about you know, some, some critical issue with, uh, employment, you know? Um, if we're just talking about questions and those sorts of things, I'll get back to you, then, well, you know it'll take a little bit of time to get you an answer, but uh, you know, if we're talking about, you know, discipline or something like that, is, that's within a couple of hours. And usually that's because I'm on the road and I, you know, I can't call you that second.
Any other questions? Anything else you need to know about this? Just a comment I might ask all three of you, I probably will. Is there a positive or negative for having an attorney as their HR consultant and not a term?
Yeah, I think, I think the positive uh, is that, uh, you know, when I'm giving you uh, advice, it is, it's legal advice, I mean, part of the requirement of me, of me being able to keep my license and and really, uh, work in the way that I do, is I have to be up on the law. I have to be, I have to be knowledgeable about all of it. Um, I, you know, and, uh, you know, uh, so, so the knowledge level and, uh, really the ability to understand what's gonna get us into litigation, what's not. And the other part is, uh, you know, uh, like I say, you, you only ask for a very few things is, is the confidentiality of a lot of those communications, if we're talking about, uh, some of those things, there's not going to be an argument about whether um, this is discoverable, that sort of thing. It's not going to be, um, and uh, I don't know, uh, there, there certainly I'm not gonna tell you that there are, that, uh, there are pros and cons of, of, of that. Um, but, but I, my experience is that, you know, at least, uh, working with attorneys in this capacity you know, at least uh working with attorneys in this capacity and working in this capacity, I think it, I think it allows a lot more latitude. Again, I'm not gonna come in here and put a boot on anyone second and say, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. I'm, I'm, I'm here as an accessory, I'm here to help and to make things better. I'm not going to, uh, you know, be a director and have to uh push people around in that fashion because that doesn't work at accounting level. Um, I, I have told people a hundred times, I think, being an HR director in that capacity uh at accounting level is an impossible job, uh, number one, and number two, it can be a very divisive job, and I don't want to ever be a divisive figure or anything like that, I want to be here to help. Uh, so, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Yeah.
Have a great day.
You too. Brent's a lot, you trade. Probably bad thing to say here.
Oh, hey, appreciate it.
Yeah. Paul would like to sign in first.
Yeah.
So right on time here, nine thirty, PJ Groof, an associate, Paul Groof. Uh, good morning, Paul.
Good morning.
Um, he is another RFP, um, applicant that filed the RFP. We opened him up last week. Um, yeah, and resource presentation, Paul.
All right, I don't know if you want the whole song and dance. Uh, I've been doing this a long time, thirty-plus years working in HR, uh, worked as an HR director for accounting uh for several years. I've got a master's degree in business, uh, graduate number one in my class. I have all the, like, HR geeks get designations to show that you've got obtained some sort of level of skill and expertise, uh, so I, I have a SPHR through SHRM, also an SCP. Um, additionally, I'm a college instructor, so I teach undergraduate, graduate level college courses for Iowa State University, St. Ambrose University, Clark College, Augustana College in, in Rock Island. Uh, and additionally, uh, I teach HR people. So when people want to earn that designation of an SPHR or an SCP, uh, a lot of them will take a class, and so that's a class I've taught for, did Clark College for, I don't know, ten-plus years. So I teach uh HR professionals who want to earn that designation. So, I mean, really, any questions you have, you know, stop me at any, at any time. Uh, you know, so that's, I don't know, I think I had gone to an ISAC meeting, I don't know, twenty years ago, um, as a HR director for accounting, and then just had a ton of questions from the board supervisors groups and others. So that's really the start of my business, where I started out, work with counties and cities across the state um and private sector industry as well, got a client in Waterloo right now, uh, to just help with counties and cities that either don't want to afford their own full-time HR person or they can't, you know, budgets have been tight across the state. Uh, and so I guess the, the approach I have is more of, uh, county government's different than the, the public separate, the private sector. Uh, I don't know if you know this, but elected officials have considerable autonomy in what they do. So they can pretty much do whatever they want to do. Uh, I think I was proven, was it the family? It was a county in Southern Iowa whose county attorney wasn't wearing pants store. Uh, and apparently that was sprung upon in that county, they tried to remove him from office. Uh, the board removed him, and then he appealed it to the Iowa Supreme Court and said, that's not enough to remove an elected official. Uh, additionally, with the external boards and commissions, you know, you've got EMA, you've got the conference board, you've got those boards and commissions who are truly the employer. And so the difference in my world in HR is that you really have to build consensus within the team. So you have to work through them, right? And so years ago, as you may know, I've got some history here, uh, that's what we did. You know, as a team, we developed and wrote the handbook together. Um, I mean, I can do it in a day at home, um, but to me, it's gotta be driven by consensus. And so that process may take a little bit longer, but it would be to review the employee handbook, um, and have, it's, it's a bit of an educational opportunity as well, that employees and department heads can kind of get a better idea of why these things are being done. Uh, but it's gotta be, be developed initially, that it's a team. Um, if you do it that way, it also helps to develop, to get more buy-in and people have that role. Um, you know, the other, I think, difference, I know you have a couple labor attorneys, they're terrific at what they do. Uh, my world would be is I would say, HR's different than being a labor attorney. Um, you know, the work I do with counties right now is I have county employees that call me, um, and that's not any sort of an issue or a problem with the hierarchy or the chain of command. Uh, but, but I feel my job is to make sure that we don't ever need a county or need a, a labor attorney. Um, and that's been my experience is that, um, how long it's been? Fifteen years ago when I first started with this company?
I believe so, I think you left in twenty twenty.
Okay, so you already been around then?
I was not.
So, uh, it, it was that goal, is to say, hey, let's, let's build this uh as a team um and, and work proactively and get those things done. So that's the difficulty, I think, with, uh, you know, having an HR, an active proactive HR person on site. So fifteen years ago, that was my thought is, I would be up here at least once a month. I think the average, probably double that, um, and I learned a ton from that, I think. Uh, there comes a time where department heads and elected officials will have an issue that's serious enough that they'll call you, uh, but in my experience, historically, um, I get way more done by just the impromptu stop by how things going, uh, because again, my goal is to stop it before it gets to a point where we need a labor attorney. Uh, and that's how HR works. Think of any organization in this community or the state that have professional HR people, it's that resource that employees can call and say, hey, you know, this, this is what's going on, is there any way you can kind of help me through this? Um, as an example of that, you know, I'm working with the Secretary of Work's department right now. Um, I think it's fair to say that some of the employees think that the maintenance supervisor is kind of a jerk. And, uh, so that's what kind of came to me. Uh, it's not here, so I don't want you to think there's any secret work going on, I don't know if I did it, but, um. I think I stumbled on something. Uh, and so the process was just simply, hey, let's do an investigation. It didn't, it didn't involve any sort of higher-level HRD or anything litigious. Uh, but we're like, you know what, there's an opportunity here to make things better. So we actually created an employee survey, sent that survey out to the employees, they got to, had a chance to share their unfiltered anonymous feedback, and then the department head, in this case, the engineer took that and said, hey, maybe there are some things that we can do that are better to improve morale, kind of improve the group and the strength of that department. And so now monthly, I've been working with the leadership team in Secretary of Roads, uh, where we're going through some leadership-type training. Um, I think that's probably, my belief is, that's probably a different service than you would give with a labor attorney. You know, I still think you need to have somebody there to pick up the phone and answer questions and give advice. Um, but hopefully that's an example of more of a proactive, to say, hey, let's address the root cause issue, do some training, do some follow-up with employees, fix the issue and not just wait until we get into some sort of litigation. Uh, additionally, these are just things that have come up recently. Um, it was last fall with a question of the conference board wanted to do a performance evaluation on the assessor. And so I have several counties that have that as a regular process in place. Uh, so my role would be to do training for the, the conference board, uh, have each voting group fill out their, their performance reviews, send that back to me, I summarize it, uh, bring it into the group, go to the conference board meeting, um, and that's a way that they can do it and still stay uh in, in concert with Iowa open records laws. Um, and then the, the simple writing job postings, place, places in the newspaper. Uh, I mean, so to me, I think the difference may be, again, that proactivity, and then also, my goal would be is to reduce the workload of my department head elected official team. So, um, you know, I know that there was some language in there about assisting with work comp, uh, and that's something I've done with counties as well, I would do that here. Uh, but it would be not just to answer questions, but to kind of take the lead on that. So if there is interest in doing that, um, the way it works for me right now in different counties is when there's an injury, um, and a first report of injury is filled out, I think in one county in particular, uh, they have an on-call nurse that they call. That document is forwarded to me and a smaller group of the safety committee, typically the auditor, um, and then whoever's on the safety committee. I would review that document, some of the first to get it. Um, I would then follow up with the board individually to say, hey, we had an injury, you know, give it some kind of general heads up as to if there's any severity or any issue with it. Um, that county created an incident report form, that once we get an injury, we send it back to the department head or elected official, ask them to complete more detail, um, that, that incident that took place. Then it goes back to the department, that safety committee, the safety committee then takes an active role in determining, you know, was this just a one-off, just one of those things that happened? Or do we need to develop something that's a little bit uh more detailed? Does discipline need to happen? Uh, but again, I would be happy to take on that role and kind of lead that process. Ideally, by doing that, it would take, in, in my experience, anything new that comes down the road goes to the auditor's office. I don't know if that happens here, but, uh, essentially, they're the ones that are acting as the HR director for every county. And so hopefully that would take up some additional resources from them, free up some of their time. Um, additionally, I know it wasn't requested, but this is something my clients have asked me to help with is to take and lead the FMLA process. So Family Medical Leave Act, it's been a law now since nineteen ninety-three. Um, it's the one later on I'm aware of that individual employees at the county can be held personally liable if they mess it up. Um, and every county I've ever worked with, uh, you know, has troubles with it. It takes a tremendous amount of time, and so that's a, a new service I've added for my clients is where I would be, I would lead that FMLA process. And so what we would need to know essentially, and this would include the board as well, that any time an employee does one of three things, gives us notice that we have to send documentation, and there's tons of confusion with it. But if you have an employee that calls in and says, hey, I need FMLA, that's easy, we'll send out that documentation. And once that starts, we have to send out documentation to ask them to provide additional information. We give them fifteen days to respond, uh, and then they would come back or not, depending on what their situation is, and then by law, we're required to follow up a second time to tell them whether their leave has been approved or denied. Um, but the first event is if they say FMLA, uh, the second one would be if they describe something serious. So if somebody calls in and says, hey, I'm not coming in today, my three-year-old has a hundred-degree fever. We'd say, okay, is that serious? You know, probably not. Uh, my three-year-old's having two put in his ears. That might be one, you know, go, well, maybe, I'm not sure. You know, or somebody calls in and said, hey, I was driving to work today, my spleen exploded. I'm no doctor, but that's not serious. Okay, so anything like that, that would consider, could be considered to be serious, that would again, trigger us to have to send the form, uh, wait fifteen days to get it responded, uh, then they respond to it. And then the third option would be then if they ever miss three or four days' order. So there's often a misnomer that FMLA doesn't kick in until you've been gone for three days. Uh, that's not the case, FMLA can be as little as one hour. Uh, but it's just one of the three events that we would have to send that documentation. So, you know, that's my approach generally proactive, you have to work with the department head team and elected officials. You don't have an option not to, you can't make them do anything that they, as elected official, don't want to do. Um, and also work with the external boards and commissions as well. Um, so again, proactive, you know, when I started this business twenty years ago, I think that's important. Uh, there's a ton of conversations that have, that take place, um, just with those department head games. Um, and, uh, well, one-on-one meetings, you might have our department heads and elected officials. Um, promote, strongly promote employee engagement as well, you know, to, to call whoever you hire directly. Uh, and the goal would be to make sure that we don't ever need a labor attorney, that's really right. I thought, so I don't know, do you have any questions, comments?
We, uh, so, so you're not an attorney?
Correct.
So what happens when you get into some litigation? Would, I mean, you find somebody or?
It would, I think it would be probably the same process you had in place, so I've done, uh, I've, I've, my clients over the thirty years I've done this have been sued for more than a hundred million dollars and I've never lost a case. I've personally handled sixty-two civil rights complaints and I've never lost a case. You know, I would say, I would put that record up against any attorney. Um, so I'm very aware of, you know, the, the process in place. So if anything, you know, if I've got a department head elected official calling me tomorrow about uh something that's going on in their office, and I'm like, this is, this is a bad one, again, it would be an update to each board member individually. Um, normally, I would conduct the, the investigation all the way up to that point of potential litigation, and then the process would happen just like it is now. So I think you have an attorney on the place now, whether they do the investigation or not, I don't know, but at, at some point, when you have that requirement to notify your, um, insurance provider, they would typically step in and say, here's the attorney that we're gonna recommend handle that case. So the process would be exactly the same.
Um, if a department head team or a staff member needs contact information, I think you're the contact.
Yep.
For your business, um, how long does it take to respond back to an email or a phone call on average?
I would say every, every phone call email is responded to within twenty-four hours. Most of the time, it's within, you know, you know, you can test me on it, it's probably, I'll pick it up right away if I'm driving, um, but I would say I would expect to respond within two hours, but no later than one day.
Would you also handle the union contracts, negotiations?
Yep, that would be absolutely, that's something I've done previously here. Certainly table unwilling, um, I've sat at that table and smacked my head on that whiteboard a thousand times, so.
Do you have partners or associates in your office?
Um, I have, I have, I don't have any permanent, um, employees, but I have resources I use uh if I get to a point where I need some specialized expertise in certain areas.
Um, references, is there any current counties that we could reach out to if we need to or?
Yeah, I think, uh, probably my longest client so far, I think, for example, is Henry County. Uh, the board chair there is Mark, um, what is it, kill me if you can, I'm just gonna. Um, Mark Lindy is, is the board chair. And I would also encourage department heads, elected officials to reach out to their peers as well. I found that counties are all pretty connected.
From prior years that, uh, did you have hours in the county? Or like, or did you just show up and?
We, well, we did previously is we had a monthly department head meeting um where the department head team and elected official team would get together every month. Uh, what I would do is, um, update them on any new labor law changes, give them a, a heads up. Because the way I look at it is, you know, the counties I have, kind of think of it as one giant county. And if some issue came up in a different county, that's problematic, I want to make sure that our team is aware of that. And so we would get together monthly, uh, have that conversation, um, updates, you know, any recommendations from that team, as far as any policy or procedural changes that they were interested in, ultimately take that to the board. Uh, and then additionally, uh, throughout the year, if there was any, you know, hey, any way you could go to the board and health meeting this week, we've got something going on, that was already obviously included in it as well. But I think it ended up being a couple times a month that would come up. Um, once a month for sure was, was the set department head dating date, um, and then beyond that, just as, as requested. Lots of investigations here, I miss clunders, so.
I asked this question to Brent, so I'll ask it to you too, um, you might have answered it when you, Travis had the question. Is there any positive or negative for this county to hire an attorney or non-attorney in HR?
Um, I think, from my perspective, you've, you probably already have access to a labor attorney. So most insurance companies already offer you a, you know, and insurance companies, both, um, health insurance and liability, you might already have access to five or ten hours of free legal service. Um, and again, to me, the difference is that proactivity versus a reactivity. The, the attorney will be there when you want to call and ask a question. Um, HR is more proactive, you know, as an example, I had a chance to look at your handbook. You know, as an example, I had a chance to look at your handbook. Several years ago, the law changed that said, anytime a county employee is disciplined, demoted, or you let him quit instead of firing him, that that now becomes a matter of public record. And that you have to notify employees in advance of that possibility, that that information could be released publicly. So that's in every county handbook, it's not in yours. So to me, that, to me, shows the difference between being proactive and reactive. In my world, it would be something I'd bring to the department head team and say, hey, this is something we take a look at, we need to implement. But it's currently not in your handbook, and it really shouldn't be, and that law's been in place for years. So that's where I see is the big downside is, you know, an attorney will be there when you call to answer questions, and they'll give you some advice, but more than likely, they're not, you know, actively engaged with the employees. I would say probably for sure. Nor they, you know, my goal again is to avoid ever needing a labor attorney. And that to me is the best way to handle HR is to deal with these issues when they're very small. Then we never get to the point where anyone's calling an attorney. And I think historically, my time here proved that, right? It worked, it worked well. I don't know how you're sitting right now with, with labor issues, but that's what I think is the big difference between a labor attorney versus HR. From the legal standpoint, again, I've been doing this for years. And anytime that I get to a point where we need to bring the groups, group together, you're already paying, you're already prepaying for labor attorney services that are provided to you at free. And my goal is to avoid ever needing anything beyond that. And more than likely, it's a lot less expensive. So that's how I look at this, is to say, you know, I believe my quote is probably the lowest quote you have. And I'm guessing I'm the only one that's offered to take over the administration of WorkCom and FMLA and provide a more proactive approach. You know, which I think is probably more responsive to the taxpayers. So I'm offering more at a lower cost. We've got some history here, I think we've done some great things. The current handbook, the majority of it is something that I've written. So must not be too bad, we still love it.
How much money was the post-fee structure?
Fifty hundred bucks a month.
Flat fee and then no?
Uh.
Per hours, flowers, or?
No, additional hours, uh, to ten hundred dollars a month. And then additional for mileage and any other necessary lodging fees, if requested, beyond site. And it's the same rate as considered for a two-year contract.
Do we have free services for each, for Hartland?
Yes.
How much do we get per?
I don't know, it's not so much based on hours, it comes out of our reserve, out of our reserve funds.
And that's why I asked that question earlier, kind of addressing Travis's question with Brent. You know, is there a conflict of interest there? And that's not my call to determine if there is, but you know, he's giving us advice as to, hey, you should fire this person, you should tell this person X, Y, and Z, and then ultimately gets turned over to insurance. You know, he's representing the insurance company, you know, how does that work? That's not for me to, my call, but I think that's kind of what he's getting to me to answer your question. Is that it wouldn't matter regardless of whether he's doing it or not, or if he's doing it or not. Eventually, he's going over to the insurance company, and that'd be the ones that would pick up the tail on the labor law.
Right.
That's what he's trying to explain to you.
You should have asked that question for Brent.
You should have done this whole thing for him.
Well, you did a great job, didn't you?
Brent, but that's the county attorney.
All right. Sorry. I interrupted you.
Any other questions for Paul? All right, thank you, appreciate you guys. Yes, have a good day.
All this upgraded stuff now?
Yeah, you're live.
So, Paul just?
Sure.
I just have a sheet. Here on number ten says the Family Medical Leave Act, but you, I thought I just heard you say that you're, that hired, you take a WorkCom?
Yeah.
So is that?
I should have put it in, I think that was a good response to.
Did you want to say this again?
I think I have a blurb in there about handling the WorkCom.
Oh, yeah, number eight.
Okay. Yeah, and it works pretty well, it really just, I don't know if you guys know where your mod factor is right now?
Yeah, we just got it.
One oh two. Okay, so we're a little better, where's you?
Currently, we're up one.
Okay, so to me, it's suggesting, hey, we're kind of moving in that direction. In my experience, the best way to handle the WorkCom is again, being proactive with it. So we have a right as a county to have access to all that data, all that information. So the counties I do that work for, again, the first report of injury comes to me. We follow up with the department head to fill out an incident report. We review it, make a determination of if any, any additional process or procedure needs to take place. And then I'm the one that's making contact with the employee, following up on appointments, talking to your WorkCom insurance provider. You know, just this last week, we had a conversation to say, hey, I think I've got, not here obviously, an employee who seems to be pushing the envelope. So reached out to their physician to say, you know, are they doing everything they need to be doing to get back to work? We want to treat them well, we want them to be healthy, but it would be somewhat, it would be, ideally, again, that would take, it can't take a ton of time off of the plates of the department head team, elected officials work. It works pretty well too, if you, and if you have the time to stand up for that.
But I thought that way, sitting here, so who does that now, and how's that process working now?
So Donna usually takes care of it. So we, like for WorkCom, it'll be like, they'll contact Donna and I'll start giving people work.
And then who does the rest of all the, if it's all in your office, it's you handling all of it?
Pretty much.
Okay. I think I was going to, where the words would shift.
Donna's going to love it. I worked with her before.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Yep. All right, we've got a couple minutes yet.
I'm confused, are you going to be for an HR attorney or HR, like, I don't even know.
We will have that discussion after Mike's presentation.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Um, what else can I say? Anybody have committee assignment last week?
In Hartland meeting, appeared to be worrying, Zoom meeting, just to finalize the insurance for the next fiscal year for, and this was for Hartland. I think Sheila has provided us all the part, hours and orders today, but we just meant to approve the policy for, for higher Hartland. We had the ferry removals and signature optimizations. I did, we have everything back now, there was a whole lot of aside or stuff that I had assigned, which I assigned like Thursday afternoon, so.
It is, but I'm glad.
Everything should be back, but.
And now it's on the nineteenth?
Yeah, it's on the nineteenth.
Hold on. That's all I have. Travis?
I know, I had a county social service executive meeting on Thursday. Very short, we all know it's going to sunset here next Monday. We meet Wednesday this week up in Jose, Chico County. Pretty much human resource update and the ISAC twenty-eighty dissolution. Trying to get out of that twenty-eighty agreement with ISAC. And then the twenty-eighty agreement with the twelve county members. Otherwise, the state has accepted the closeout plan for all regions. And I guess the executive board, pretty much, we, we still don't know who's going to be in charge of paying the claims come August, September. And that's the thing we would have to check with the state. You know, if we get out of the twenty-eighty, that means the twelve counties are no longer in charge, so. We need some more answers of who's going to pay those claims that are currently being served. It'll be all the old bills, you know, not all new bills. New bills will be done through an agent out of Des Moines. But we're wondering what the purpose is moving forward after July first. As of right now, our last meeting is Wednesday, and I guess we'll see if they need the twelve counties to stay on or not stay on moving forward. They want monthly meetings with the regions until December thirty-first, just so they know what's going on with past bills, past one. Hopefully, we'll learn a little bit more Wednesday, but otherwise, most likely, that is the last CSS meeting of the regions. Like I said. Yeah, so I believe.
Okay, would you see if Mike's outside?
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Mike. What's happening?
Yeah.
Oh.
If you could, please. All right, ten o'clock here, Ayla's attorney, Mike Galloway. Morning, Mike.
Good morning.
He is our third law firm, or sorry, second law firm, third HR presentation today. He is our current HR consultant for Chickasaw Counties, so, Mike, you're at the floor.
Sure. Obviously, I've been with you guys for, I don't even know how many years it is now, but it's, is it five?
Like twenty-five, isn't it?
Twenty-twenty or twenty-nineteen?
Yeah.
A little fast.
See time flies when we're having a hot time. We've, I represent or work with probably fifty or fifty-five of the counties now. It might be more than that. Have a team with me, and that's just the labor employment things that I do here. We also, as a law firm, as you guys may or may not know, do a lot of finance work for cities, counties, everybody across the state. So we probably, when you add those in, we don't do their labor, probably seventy or eighty percent of the counties in the state. Obviously, having, I've been doing this for thirty years. For the new board members, I'll give you my background just a little bit, I might have done that before, but I started doing this type of work in ninety-six, ninety-seven. I've been doing this so late, my whole time. I started with the state of Iowa back in the day. I was the general counsel for the Iowa Department of Personnel, which was not in existence, but I was responsible for all employee relations, for general counsel and head of labor relations for thirty thousand employees. Then I went over to County, so I've actually worked in accounting as their labor relations slash HR. I was there for two years, and then I've been with the firm for twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-one years, representing only cities, counties, board regions, some of the large community colleges across the state in only labor employment. We don't take on employee cases, so we don't have conflicts. The only conflicts we sometimes have is in most of the counties that we work with. We also represent the city, which is the county C. We don't represent New Hampton, I don't think, at least I don't. So as you guys know, sometimes there's some bits of conflicts there, but we seem to be working, be able to work through those. The benefits, obviously, I think we have a vast experience, we have a team dedicated to whatever you guys need. I started with you, so whenever you want to see me, obviously, you can see me, call me. I think I've always been very responsive, continue to be. I always try to return people's calls within the same day or a text message. You know, we text now, you guys all have my cell phone if you want to use it. Especially the chairs use it, I know, and the department heads and the elected officials. I know the auditor's office talks to Ann quite a bit. Obviously, Roman calls me from time to time, and obviously, the sheriff's office. So we've tried to be as responsive as we can. Obviously, you can always do things better, we always look for feedback. As you guys know, we don't require you to enter into a contract, never have, never will. You don't like what we do, you can tell us in thirty days, we finish up that month, whatever we have, and you can go a separate way. I don't believe in contracts, that's the way we work. You know, we're on a, I think it's the flat fee we proposed, keeping that the same. It's very encompassing, it encompasses everything, basically, all your calls. The only thing we bill in addition to is mileage to come up, but there's no additional bills. It covers grievances, it covers curb, it covers negotiation, it covers handbook updates, it covers basically everything except complex investigations, if you have one, and hopefully you don't have one, that we have to dive into. But we are also very appreciative with our counties. We have about forty that do the flat fee, so we've kind of created our own insurance pool. We, another important thing for the board to understand is, is we don't typically represent insurance carriers. And I think that's very important because your interests and the insurance company's interests don't always align. Now, obviously, I can assist, and I do assist with, liaising with your insurance carriers, but oftentimes attorneys with insurance, they're number, they represent you guys, right? But they're also, their number one priority is the insurance company, and we, I've had to explain that from time to time. We do represent ICAP at corporate level. Not too long ago, they were at the Supreme Court, so we represented them. They asked us to do that at the Supreme Court level, and we were very successful for them. But on a normal case-by-case basis, we're not on anybody's designated list, whether it be Hartland, whether it be N C, whether it be ICAP. We will take from time to time, if clients really want us and the insurance company will allow us to do a case, we will do that on a very complex employment matter or, you know, service matters, or there's been some really interesting issues that we've taken on. But generally, we just work for the employer, the county, and obviously, your guys' case. Like I said, we have a lot of experience throughout the firm, and we also make sure that we have backups. Like I was on vacation last week, but I referred it to Sheila. So that emergencies inevitably happens, emergencies happen when I'm on vacation, and we make sure that you guys get information that you need, and then we can get back to it. What other things? Oh, I, I would tell you that we are very appreciative and understanding of all of the property tax reform. We've looked at your numbers, we held it steady this year, even though usage would indicate that it should have went up probably a hundred or two hundred bucks a month. We're trying to, across the state, for all of our clients, keep that pretty flat this year, unless there's been some real dramatic issues. Because like you, we don't really know ultimately what this is going to play out, but we know something's coming. And we know what we have right now, but I can almost guarantee, probably by next year, we'll be talking about something different. As you guys also know, my consultation to you goes beyond just labor and employment. There's been general government's questions that we handle, open meetings, public records, just general stuff that, once we've developed a relationship, that I try to answer, and there's no additional fees or costs for that. You also get the confidentiality of having attorneys, and there's people that are non-attorneys that do this. Clearly, there's confidential records, but you don't get the attorney-client privilege on some of those things. I think we work very well with county attorneys across the state. Don't know, everyone that has it, that has us in there really appreciates it because they have a lot of other things that they need to do. And as you guys know, labor and employment can, in this day and age, take up a lot of time with all of the changes that we continue to have. We're starting to track all of the new legislation, and we'll be putting out bulletins to our clients about anything that would impact you. I think you guys are on the mailing list. And get all of those, so I can, hopefully, those are helpful, and they do provide. If nothing else, just for questions, when you go, hey, I think I saw something on that, I need to call them and figure out how we need to handle that. So I don't want to end up to you guys, questions, concerns, things you want to talk about, things you need. We've enjoyed the relationship, hope it obviously, hope to get continued it.
Uh, you will continue with the union contract negotiation within that break?
Yep.
Can you explain the hourly rate proposal, is that after we reach a certain threshold for hours or?
Nope. It covers everything, that's an option, if you guys want to do an hourly rate, I have some counties that want to do.
Okay, I just want to make sure if that's above the eighteen?
No, 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 no. Only, the, the hourly rate would only kick in if you wanted a, there was some huge sexual harassment investigation. And quite honestly, what I've done, um, I work with two firms, um, that I've helped get started, and both of them are retired police chiefs of really good standing, and they charge a lot less. And they can come in and do the investigation, and then the report comes to us. And they're doing, I was actually, uh, the former water chief is doing it right now, Joe Leibel, uh, who does a, a really nice job, he's been doing, he just started, he just retired not too long ago, and called me up and uh, he started his own company, so we've been using him and helping him get started, and he's uh, feedback from clients that have had to use it really good, hopefully you never have to use it, right? Um, the, the chances in this day and age are that it is a possibility. Yeah, so that, the long answer, very encompassing and everything, you would never have to worry about the hourly rate. But some clients want an hourly rate.
Just for the record, for those that are watching, so it's eighteen hundred a month with no cap on that, and that covers everything, I'm going to say, will you? Okay, well, be honest.
I think you answered all my questions already. Um, you got a team of Ann and Jeff. Um, we haven't worked with Jeff much, but he got added a couple months ago.
Jeff's great, uh, Jeff is, he actually, his career path is almost like mine, he was with the state, he was their general counsel when it was the Department of Administrative Services now. Uh, then he was the HR director at Pope County, uh, and I watched Jeff come up through the ranks. Uh, uh, he's probably fifteen years younger than I am, right? Because I'm getting old. Um, and, uh, so he's hit the ground running. Actually, he was so good, Pope County kept him on a flat fee contract and brought him back. Um, and, uh, so he's getting to deal with some of their interesting issues. And, and the clients we represent, guys we represent, obviously from the largest to smallest, Adams County at thirty-seven hundred to Pope County and everybody in between, uh, we have a very stronghold in kind of the north, central, northeast, um, uh, down to the, kind of the south-central, I travel as far northeast, as you guys know, Howard County, uh, to the northwest, probably Dickens, and now I go further west, I can't remember, down to Mills, and then over to, uh, so, is Kew County probably, probably further than that, but, so we're just kind of all over the state. Uh, the other good thing, I think, is, uh, doing this for thirty years, I've seen a lot, right, guys? Um, now, I won't tell you that I've seen everything, because I get shocked at least monthly with something that, uh, I couldn't even believe, and, and a lot of it's new things that are going on, like this regional, regionalization of the mental health, and the bids on DAPs, and all of this, and then you have, uh, possibly probably the regionalization of public health, so we've been helping counties kind of, uh, guide through like what we do with existing staff, how's this going to play out, those things like that, so. Uh, and that would typically be outside, but we keep it all under the flat fees.
So you mean the HR attorney? Then why do we have people saying there's nowhere to call if we, if there are HR people?
So that question, I can go into that a little bit more. Um, do you take calls since you're our current HR?
Hmm.
From like, besides department head selected officials? Do you ever get a call from like, uh, example, a clerk?
I have in the past, I don't think in Chickasaw, uh, but other counties, but I clearly go, wait a second, I'm not here. You have to understand, I can advise, I can give you information about our policies or our contract, but I represent a county.
So there was a question, both was many months ago, I'm not going to say who, I never will do that. Um, they felt they don't have a contact for HR services through the county, with, in the county.
They being a non-department head, not like a official.
Correct, that's who I'm referring to.
And confidential.
Yep, and they want to keep it confidential. So in counties that you do serve, who would they go to?
Well, it depends on what the issue is, right? If they want to file a complaint, lots of times it is with me. And then the, the board would say, Mike, you take the complaint, and we would tell them stuff, the same thing, right? We represent, just like an HR director should be telling them. We, I work for the board. And understand, I'm not here to advise you on what you should do, I'm going to advise you what our policies and procedures and the laws are. And we do that, absolutely. But it's not where somebody just wants to say, I think I'm being mistreated by the board of supervisors, you need to help me. That's not, that's, and that's not what an HR director should do.
More like if they're having a problem, like with who they report to directly? Like who do they go to, they're not going to go to the board supervisors, because that's on the.
Well, i- i- in county government, that's tough.
Right, that's, yeah.
Because of the elected official status. This board has zero control of how the treasurer, county attorney, auditor, all the electeds, and the independent boards manage their employees. So absolutely, we can talk to them, um, and if it's confidential to a certain, I mean, if they have a whistleblower complaint, or they have, they've been sexually harassed, I mean, yes, we typically, and even in some of the handbooks say that, depending on what the issue is, I don't have a county attorney in this, but lots of times there's something where the county attorney can be a screener and say, no, you need to talk to me.
And like I said, oh. I didn't know the exact problem, but they wanted to talk to somebody, you know? Is it the HR attorney?
It could be, absolutely, depending on what, what the issue is. But, I mean, anybody that's got a concern should at least be able to articulate to some, I mean, there's plenty of avenues within a county, even if you don't have an HR director on staff, that, and they want to keep something confidential, there's places that they can go, and as long as the board's, what they have to understand is that's not their personal representation, and some towns and boroughs don't understand that.
Never anymore, in terms of, we have the good job of saying, you know, I think you're referencing, you say, Michelle, I have a problem in my office, you know? Who, who should call, I mean, does she call Mike, does she call you, I mean, or does someone like that call?
Without, without it flooding to everybody.
Right, I mean, I gotta help with this.
And it's from a private, private sector, you have an HR department, you have a problem with your boss, you go there, you either they coordinate it where you sit down and you talk together, or you either they talk, you don't even like, help resolve it. But we, then I understand the governments, I completely understand that.
And, yeah, and.
But I just feel like we're really doing a disservice to the employees, and they don't feel safe to talk to anybody. If, you know, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, you know, for me, I can talk to Iowa about anything, I mean.
This is your bomb.
Yeah. You would be surprised at this knowledge or the things.
Well, Ray, I've been here, you were there, I've seen, I've seen emails from you, right?
Yeah.
And Dave, you might be right, I mean, it's trying to educate that the HR is under our contract, it's, and that's supposed to be Thomas boards too.
Right, and, and absolutely, and that's, I mean, you have all of these different, you have different bosses, right, versus city or private sector where everything goes up to one, or at least a group. We're so fragmented in county government, and, and as new board members, that's always a kind of a shock, right? I know a lot of you are relatively, within the last five to seven years. It's like, you get on board of supervisors, and you find out you've got purse strings, and then management control is this guy. And then the, you have to report directly to the board. Um, and then it becomes more of a relationship advising, and anybody that's an HR director in that county would tell you the same thing, because I have a lot of counties that have hired HR directors, by the way, and it's interesting, right? Um, our actual calls go up when counties hire HR directors, and our work actually increases when there's HR director. I had a county not too long, a couple of years ago, said, you know, Mike, we love everything, but we're going to hire an HR director. And I said, give it six months, I'll bet you have more work, we have more work than you have right now. And I talked to the chair six months later, and I said, did you see all of the listings, any of those? I guess we didn't know what we didn't know. That's a reality, um, of, of things that become uncovered and how they end with a situation, so.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Mike.
All right, guys, thank you for everything.
Yes. Well, up again, Mike, is it your floor now?
Uh, I'm coming up. Take care, everybody.
All right. Move on then to, you just heard all three, uh, human resource, I can probably say, slash union negotiation, uh, presentations. Guys need any more resources checked, or I guess have discussion of how do we continue this county with HR, or look at maybe other options? Um, what is this county, you know, potentially lacking, everything about like the last one just said, you know, they can do better. So I'm just going to let it open up to the floor, what have you guys heard in the last hour and a half?
Can I ask a question, what, as a safety person? Safety person?
Yeah, go ahead, I guess.
So is there a reason why we can't have like the Ales and Cooney as our attorney, and have the other guy as our HR?
So, I can, think I can answer this, um, Brent does represent Hartland. Hartland is our insurance carrier, or?
I'm the, I'm the second guy.
So.
Who is.
Paul Ray. We've had it before, you guys saw that, uh, that probably me and Ray are the only two here that worked with him.
And I don't like him.
I know that.
He has more confidentiality, he has more confidentiality, or professionalism. We would sit in a meeting like this, and he would use most any other square word in the book in our meetings, and we'd talk about other jurisdictions. So, I'm sorry, but that's my opinion.
I get that, Ray. Um, so, yeah, I don't know anybody else that contracts HR, non-attorney, except for Paul. Um, that's why I felt an R P to him is, see both sides, right? Do we need another attorney? I, I guess I can answer that, by the value that they give, um, the knowledge, um, but then look at the price difference. No, that's the difference, correct.
I think what we're next saying is we need more handbook stuff, we need more proactive stuff, not, hey, they did the fan, so let's call a attorney, we need more on front, making sure we're compliant, and we're servicing our employees and servicing our staff. I don't think that's before him, but that's a side side getting from him.
Yeah, I mean, and all the times that I have been in the hot container things, I know there's a lot of things that we need to do, and I feel like they're aggressive enough to get that stuff done, but if there's a hangup between me being the insurance company and ours, I mean, obviously, just.
I mean, I, I think public record will share, and I won't get myself in trouble with this, um, you know, Paul, when he was here, he, he did an investigation, um, perfectly to the T, he responded, the response back to the county attorney, and I can say that saved my lawsuit, right? Um, I felt Paul was a very good, he was here every month, like you said, he had monthly department head meetings. I know Ray, you voiced your opinion. Um, you guys saw, he did swear a little bit this morning, um, but that's, it's not professional. But, uh, I know he did the job. And I think that's what we're laughing.
I agree with Renee on Hops and Tugner, they are a very excellent firm, like I mentioned earlier, you know, we use them and the Assessment Association, um, one of their attorneys for our work, and they service us very well.
Mike has done union negotiations, uh, and that's something, um, I believe Paul and Mike have done well. Doesn't matter, either one of them, um, they got a lot of things what the board wanted. So on that end of it, I would fare both of them to this, the, the best they could for the county, um, for union negotiations. Everybody said they would respond back within twenty-four hours, um, most of them said same day, without, within hours. Uh, but, again, do we want somebody that's proactive or reactive?
I think hot containers also on the proactive side, if there's someone to work with them.
The thing I don't like about that is the ten hours. Um, I would be, on a budget standpoint, if we don't get monthly hour sheets.
He said he did.
No, I, I know, and then at what month do we have to start paying additional two hundred bucks an hour? Or at that point, are we going to say, oh, we don't need you anymore, we're going to go to somebody else, or have nobody, just because we can't continue to pay the two hundred dollars an hour, if there's a lot of HR? I mean, look at, look at the handbook, right, would that take ten hours the first month, or forty hours the first month?
I think for those, for everything that we really truly need to do, we would be way over for the first few months. But then I think it could work itself out.
Yeah, and it could.
Because we would have things more spelled out, more clear and concise.
My concern would be with confidentiality.
Yeah.
With Paul, you, you won't have that.
You speak from history, though, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's a proven track record.
I think sometimes you have to, have to Paul get to slay us, not just, uh, tell her mom.
Paul does, you know, any HR person that we go in the contract with, um, or a written month-to-month contract, he works for, you know, they work for the board supervisors. But. The law, like it said, like some, one of them said, the law takes care of the elected officials. Remind you, we only employ three people, the engineer, the custodian, and the EMS director. The clerks. Not the individual name though, but the positions, yes.
Yeah.
The, but as an HR director, you still, I mean, the county, things still have to be confidential. Ray? Yes.
Yes, I mean, that would be part of what the expectation would be, I think Ray's just speaking from his personal experience, that's why I'm going to be clear, it's not, I, I don't think Ray's saying that because he's not an attorney, we, in theory, lose all of that confidentiality, or it's really, really whatever he wants to do. I think Ray's just saying that in his personal, maybe in his personal experience, he didn't tell, he don't have that confidentiality.
And I.
That's fair.
About.
I guess I will say that I haven't dealt with Paul, or I was an assistant when Paul was here, so, but I didn't have much involvement there, but I will say Mike has been very good to work with. I'm not trying to steer one way or the other, I will just throw off, but when I needed him, he gave me advice that I felt was good advice.
I don't think Paul's ever got us in a lawsuit, I don't think, I don't think he has, but, I, I think he did well for the county, that is my opinion. He saved my ass, I'll tell you that. So. Any discussion, or is there anything to move on, or? What are you budget for each of us? Ninety thousand dollars for general services. Spent that number for years, it's, you guys did get a copy today that if you, if the board does not decide to stay with Ales and Cooney, um, otherwise they need a thirty-day notice um, to terminate this fee arrangement. Thirty days from today, he finished the month of July.
And you feel that way about Paul and Jay with your personal experience?
And to the county. I mean, he, to me, he was open, he was here every month, I think that's what's lacking right now. The workers' comp stuff, the FMLA, I just think we could do better.
Oh, I agree, we can do better.
So.
We spent, we spent on workers' comp.
Excuse, well, whenever we get a claim.
I mean, how many, how many claims do we average a year? And I mean, are we talking like professionals every day, every week, every month?
Well, did our last handout say?
It's all up with it.
Were we up to like nine or something?
Oh, yeah.
I know it went up, just when I see a heart one a little bit the last 12 months compared to what they were the year before, but.
And that has a sense for how much, when I oversight there is or how much hands-on there is from, from our offices, I guess that's my question.
When I get notified of a workers' comp claim, then I don't like to like chuck into it, ask questions as far as the safety part of it. To see, you know, wait until, there's some things that just happen.
Oh, like, what, what, what do we want to take out here?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't think you want to ask that question because she's the one that works at that, that's my lady, workers' comp. Can I have her hand?
Is there an out Jake? For the first two, if you replace, or third one has to out for that? Is there, I mean, we locked in for the three years with the tacos and the two years with, is it brief group, like comes in? Group and associates or I mean, I honestly haven't seen a contract yet, but do we know if there's a, hey, we get three, four, six months into them? I know that's the direction we have now, where we're kind of month-to-month with Ailer's and Cooney, so next time we want to change it, we could. But we'd have that same option with them, or are we on the hook to pay, you know, for six months in and they'll like it? Over the rest of time?
Never check, but I think, let me pull up Brent's. So they've had that in there at all. The second year was 24 and the second year would be additional 24.
So, Donna and I were just talking, I was telling her that they're bringing her out to speed. And so she was gonna go through our whole process with the workers' comp. So people give us a claim, we'll, do we do with it?
Well, we don't have many workers' comp claims, I mean. I would think that would be normal. Are you talking workers' comp like they get hurt on the job? I mean, Renee does a lot of that.
What about FMLA then?
FMLA, I mean, we send out paperwork. Last time Paul was good about getting us like all the up-to-date forms and making sure we were doing what we needed to do. But he actually don't send out the forms and keep track of the hours that are off on FMLA and make sure they're covered and all that stuff. We handle that, I don't think he would follow through with that because you'd be sending all their time sheets and all that stuff to him.
I've got two people on FMLA myself and I, you know, I've got all the forms and, and I pay the forms that I submitted to them. They submit to the doctors, the doctors return that to me and then I, I establish whether they qualify or not. And I track it all on myself in my own office.
And Mike, we reached out to Ailer's and Cooney with worker, or excuse me, FMLA questions and they're very helpful. Their time has run out, but they still have a lot of sick leave, so supposedly they're covered. Or we had someone that was going to have a baby and didn't qualify for FMLA and so they explained what we, they would have. So, I mean, they're good about answering questions with that. I don't think they would, I don't think anyone would follow through with the process of sending out all the paperwork and all that stuff. Unless that's what the doctor particular. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's the end then, to Heather.
No, I, I guess so we don't have, if you say Ailer's and Cooney, we don't really have some action here. We have a contract, correct? So it's months, months?
Yeah, pretty much. And the rate didn't change?
Yeah, I'm okay to stay with Ailer's and Cooney.
Yeah, same.
Scott, is there anything or Scott?
I guess I would be more towards Renner's Hopkins Center, I think, I like to figure out a group where they have to they tend to be able to be more proactive. And I've attended a lot of the same seminars that Renee has been to and they seem to be very good with their platform. I don't know right now. I, from what I'm hearing, is everybody wants, everybody to be more proactive. I think Paul would probably be here more, answer questions. Employees would be, would be giving, employees would give to him.
Scott, you concerned with the 10L max per month of 220 hours per year?
I probably am a little bit initially, because I do think that you're bringing there to it. There's some, a lot of work probably needs to be done on a few things. I think it'll level out.
I think by having all that stuff up to date and knowing that we are compliant, we'll take care of things down.
Do we want to call, I guess Brent or Paul for next week? To see if there's an out in their contracts? And we know we have an out with the current provider and one we will not determine that because they still do a 30-day out. Finish the month out. Because with Hopkins, this would be an extra $2,400 per year. Mike think though is again, if we need some direction and it's gonna be over those 120 hours, then it could be more than the $2,400 additional.
Plus Paul's fee?
A $1,500.
So $500?
$500 difference per month. That's if we don't want to lock into two, sorry. We don't know if it's a whole year or is it monthly? Like David and Cooney?
I'm not dissing any problems, I just, as a attorney, I'm gonna miss, what my, with my contract, if you're gonna sign a contract, if there's an issue, is there? And maybe you don't, maybe that's not an issue, maybe you're confident enough in either of them or your current arrangement, you guys worry about that, so.
But the way I took it in this presentation, that so many hours per month. And if you don't use them, then at the end of the year, they'll do the extra work with the handbook. If you do that at the beginning of the year, I'm afraid you're gonna get charged extra every month because you're going over that monthly amount.
We would be over that to begin with, you know, I guess I don't really answer those questions, I don't feel forced, he probably does more than I do, obviously, but I noticed that, like maybe the comment that because of our usage, we probably shouldn't have went up. Which to me means we're using more than other counties and if that's, I don't know if that's the 1000 is the same right across the state or various county to county or area to area, but I did notice you dropped that footnote, this comment that ours probably should have went up, but it didn't because of the concerns of what might happen to our revenue coming out of property taxes. So, maybe we won't even, we'll be over the 120 already? I don't know. I mean, I don't have any field about it, honestly.
Well, I think there.
I think there's a lot more hours when they submit their hour sheet to us in the last year.
And then we get a monthly breakdown of that for a minute? So we, we could go back and look in theory and see how many hours does that actually work for us to track? That would probably give you a better indication as to where you'd be with respect to that 120 dollar operation. If that's where you're gonna, I'm trying to steer toward that.
I guess I would consider that extra $6,000 a year does human or Hopkins present a more proactive and more professionalism and support? For $6,000, I think they do.
Any other direction or is there motion or?
I think we should look at our, do we want us? You know, couple phone calls, there you go, sign up for the other contract, I report away from that. Yeah, before we lock in.
I can, yeah, or she will consider any mail to Brent and Paul, we, I think you know where Mike stands, um, per month contract.
I can't believe that's not listed in their contract.
No, I cannot.
But it will be after that phone call.
Oh, definitely. What's their, if we have an issue, what's the termination process? Are we locked in for one year? Or if we sign a two-year contract with somebody, are we locked in for two years? Rates do not change for either a one or two year. But what is the county's out if it doesn't work? Pretty much all the questions, Nick. What is the termination plan? Because we know Mike's, Mike says, you have a 30-day notice.
I guess Ailer's would probably provide that information too, how many hours we've used. I don't know how often they're marking things from their internal, it's.
It'd be pretty good, I mean, if the metal sheet was down 10 an hour or if all those little things get added in or not. Everybody gets a different thing.
The segments.
It's hard, so I mean, a lot of phone calls are noted, phone call with chair, phone call with auditor.
Well, budgeted, I mean, the way the budget's been get the whoa.
The hours, number of hours.
Yeah. I think it's already been up in the last six months.
Yeah, we used to provide that for this.
Alright, we'll try to get the answers for next Monday. Thank you. How's your one Malensi? Good morning, you coming up Dave?
Good morning.
So, last week, I guess I'll summarize the last two weeks. Division, contract rock, division one, two and four is completed. Division three, which would be the Northwest Quadrant, planned to start sometime in the next two weeks, not sure yet. I'm guessing we'll be able to, July fourth holiday, especially with the weather we got this week. Let's see, mowing, problem on the hard surface roads is completed. They did start on the side roads last week, we got the union to maintain routes nearly completed, that should be wrapped up pretty well today with the other routes. We are waiting on our third moor to get, we're having issues with the turning radius from Boden Steiner and Dagen Mowers, so that's getting figured out as we speak. So that's kind of been in limbo, Sam's been working hard trying to get them straightened out on that. I think it comes down to the front turf tires, we're skinning them up because the turn radius is just way too wide. B48 concrete patching, we closed that road on Monday morning last week. I think the guys did a great job, all things considered, working around the weather. We opened it up Friday morning, which I told all the residents on that road, we were hoping to be done by the end of the week and we were, so very happy with all, all the guys that were involved on that. Lot of that was, you know, we're getting cracking in some areas. The six-inch overlay in 2015, that probably maybe should have been an eight, maybe a fiver. We did have some, there were clay balls in the next one that was put down, I think that was a lot of the spots, but basically went out and addressed all those and some of the major cracking areas, so. Mike grew a route and seal on that project in the coming year or two, just to get cracks sealed up, but maybe on your end, crack and so, and the actual joint cracks as well, so. Bladed were out all, all week last week, doing routine maintenance. Sign crew was busy with closures. B48, then we're also, this morning we closed B22 between Kenwood and LaSalle for bridge 365, 335 replacements, which Minna was contracted to bring us a box and a crane. So our guys are up there now removing the structure and we'll get that lined up hopefully and we'll have a set around July 8th. The existing structure is a pretty hefty kind of crane box from the 50s that will take a little while to get out. See, all fist to shop project that is completed, aside from gutters, paid that invoice, $32,762.99 previously approved. Nash was shop, we did have a subject issue, a drain line that attaches to the leach field collapsed, so. Sam got that taken care of while we're at it, we emptied the tank as well. Bridge 2400 project, go with Blacktop. Driving pile for the east pier, forming the west pier cap, we are pouring that as we speak. I know they had a pump die this morning, so they're, it's gonna be a little while to get the east pier coffer dam pumped out so we can resume. We got about six pile left and they'll move quick on the footing in the pier stem and get out of the river, they're open before. This weekend looking very good, but we'll see what happens. Bridge 0270 down on 300 Street East, B56, all concrete work is completed on that, they are planning to start their work sometime this week. Like I mentioned, the project on B22 between Kenwood and LaSalle then was closed this morning, we have a gravel road detour posted. Goes up LaSalle, west on Under Street, south on Kenwood. Anticipating no one was gonna do a signed detour through L. So they'll do that on their own if they so choose, but we dust control in front of the houses that don't already have it. Hopefully one round will do it, the people that already had it, we might have to put down a coding for them before we move out because that traffic's gonna become what they put down on their own, so. Bridge 1916, 1981 projects, which will be a day labor project for our crew. We did receive quotes for sheet piling. Olden Enterprises was the low bidder at $30,351.12, that was 86.2% of my estimate. The next closest bidder was Metal Polverts, they were about 113, 116% of the estimate, 113.7% of the estimate, so we got good prices on that. See other things, TR 797 gradation optimization project that we completed on Pembroke with our guys with Iowa State, Michigan State. We got approved to have Iowa Highway Research Board will reimburse us our delta cost, so anything above what we would normally spend on that. And materials that can, that will come out to $21,268.82, that will be getting reimbursed back. Doesn't help our budget, but it helps our checking account, so. It was good that they worked with us on that. Section seemed to be holding up really good, we'll see what they, how they hold up underneath rights to use traffic, which is very extensive, so. Hopefully it does a good job. CHBP, FY25, no foe, I think I told you guys about this already. So I'm pretty sure, we got selected, we are part of the first grant for federal fiscal year '24, but now federal fiscal year '25 came out. I submitted, we had eight potential bridges, submitted those to the grants committee. I don't think we got selected for that round two, just because I heard someone from Blacktop County mention that our interco, meaning that they got selected and I'm like, well, that's probably a sign that we didn't, so. At least we're still in the one and I haven't received any like, hey, sorry, you didn't get selected yet, so it's not certain, but I'm pretty sure that we did get it around two. At least we're still in the one and I haven't received any like, hey, sorry, you didn't get selected yet, so it's not certain, but I'm pretty sure that we did get it around two. Um, Denco did complete their slurry leveling project, which would have been on B twenty-eight, T seventy-six, Kenwood Avenue and B twenty-two. Um, as well as a abupens, uh, void fill, which is also on B twenty-two. Uh, anyways, that came out to a total of one hundred, two thousand dollars, twenty-four, one hundred, two thousand, twenty-four dollars and six cents. We had budgeted a hundred and twelve and some change, so we came in under budget on that. That was of course, um, anything that wasn't spent goes back to the infrastructure fund. Um, let's see. We did receive the, I guess, final quote from Dynamic for our, uh, equipment tracking. And thirty-four total units, seventeen would have cameras. That would be primarily our motor graders and our tandems that do plowing. Um, so the initial install payment, so year one would be half your cost due to the install payment, you know, you're pretty much buying the equipment. So for all that, it is twelve thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty cents, and then your year one subscription cost is thirteen thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars. So we did some demos, Sam Renee, the foreman, you know, Sam Renee did a majority of this, at least hit it all lined up. Um, and then we did have a little train, some trainings on it. It helped have the training. It wasn't, you know, no one can just sit down on it and figure it all out, but the training was, made it fairly easy. I guess I'm looking to what I know you guys want to approve or acknowledge purchases of this magnitude. Um, on a day-to-day basis, will it be used? Maybe. Um, when somebody calls in with a question, definitely. If they're, you know, either they're asserting something or questioning something, that would be a very useful tool. And if anything requiring insurance coverage, it would be incredibly useful tool. So it's kind of one of those things that's worth nothing until you need it and it's worth a lot when you do. So I guess personally, I think it wouldn't be a bad thing to go forward, but, um, we can opt out of it at any time if all of a sudden they don't want to. Like they, they brought up a lot of things that they're doing. You know, if you're a county and you have a suggestion or a desire, they can try to make that happen. They've already helped a lot of counties by a cheap sensor that actually tells you when the block plows are down. You know, instead of just relying on speed, they've helped the county set them up and then they wire that signal into their interface and you can see that. They brought up a few different things that other counties were coming up with and they said, if you ever have any ideas, we're all ears, so. Um, I think it'd be a useful tool, but it also is money and we're on a limited budget too, so. It's a tough decision to make. I guess I would recommend to go forward because we put a lot of work into it. Let's try it if it seems to work. Hopefully the cost continues to go down like they said that it should. If more people sign on, they enter on like a co-op. So I'm kind of looking for your guys' opinion on.
What units are not going in, I want to know.
Spare, so a lot of it is like the cameras add a lot of cost, so we cut those down. Um. Cause the cameras right now, there's so much data for you to have a live feed instead of takes pictures at intervals. But then if you do need the live feed data, you contact them and they would get everything for it. The ones that don't have it would be some of the ones that are, you know, we have a dump truck that Rich Crew uses sometimes to haul filter and that's really it, so. I didn't feel it was worth putting in a piece of equipment like that. Some of the spares, most of the spares have it, like the spare fleet vehicles.
I would rather hold off until other counties jump in and we see a price go down, in my opinion, but I'm not sure how anybody else feels, but.
My personal opinion is I don't.
If we're gonna get kickback from the churn, okay. That'll pay before, why does that?
The only time it's gonna help you is if someone piles a lane and then that data is used to defend your position on it. And that's where it's gonna save you money if you do it, but that's also that situation. We need that happen for that to be available, so.
I know Five Star has that, they will never go away from it. They've saved a lot of time and Max has it proves who's at fault. And she's an ice truck driver.
You know, one case, save the money.
Chair going forward with it right now.
If we put enough work into it already. Yeah, it's needed. I mean, those guys are always on the road. I mean, Squad Cards hasn't, not our big secondary road system, haven't too, just to. Why do the issue to, uh, PR relations with the public?
Yeah, honestly, I know some of the guys were fearful that, you know, you're gonna have someone over your back shoulder. I don't have the time for that at all, but I think it would be nice when someone calls in saying, I haven't seen a blade or mower by my place in two months or a month. And I can go on there and show them right away. It's clearly been there or it hasn't. I mean, no, but we need to address it.
Do you budget for a mention?
And they were kind enough to say, if we wanted, we could wait to pay, don't know about the proper taxes coming. It's just every fiscal year we get. Seems like we get a lot of bills in the first three months, so. But if I'm hearing a three, two, I guess I'll probably move forward with it. I might visit with him in regards to Isaac, your question or my question as well, like. Are we actually gonna see some savings when you get more subscriptions or? Yeah, I guess we'll move forward with that. Unless you're.
It's like one more comment. I have received a lot of comments, a lot of being used as a spy technique, so. A lot, quite a few calls.
Yeah, talk to, talk to any other county that asks it too, because they had that before and then now you talk to them and they say, oh.
Yeah, like in my experience.
And if you hear about that, please visit with me.
Yeah, well, my experience of five stars, the drivers were very fearful to start with, but now they're all comfortable with it.
I talked with, oh, Bremer County, they came up with our drop hammer for drag and pile and I was asking them about it because we just had a kind of a demo on it. And they resonated that, yeah, we didn't like the idea, but pretty good. Most of the guys don't care or they like it, so. So I guess I'll move forward with that. Um. Did spend a significant portion of time on the RFP for architectural consultants. Um. Got some good feedback, a lot of options. I'm in the process of trying to take that RFP out now, which I see is on the agenda, so I'll skip that for now. Um, Iowa D O P salt bids were received for this upcoming winter, the low bid for Chickasaw, twelve hundred ton was ninety-four dollars and ninety-one cents per ton. Uh, budgeted a hundred and two dollars and ninety cents, so that was a good price reduction. It was actually less than last fiscal year. Um, chloride quote was also received from Austin. Um, ten dollars and five cents a bag. I had budgeted ten dollars and ten cents a bag, so that's also good. Six county meeting prep, just a heads up, uh, it's this Thursday in Fredericksburg, adheres to you. Um, nine fifteen start. You guys got the agenda, so if you want to attend. On the week prior, more of the same, but a few things that I didn't mention, I guess blades were out that week as well, except for the morning of six twelve due to raining. Um, our SC nineteen fifty project, which is now a bridge, um, which would be North Little Turkey on Windsor. We put in two tanker cars at that location. That was completed in open traffic on June eleventh. Lot of maintenance stuff that week. We were doing a lot of edge rid, edge rubbing, um, troubled shoulder areas, B twenty-one. Probably got you to saw County Park and I know they were doing a little bit last week, I think, on B twenty-two, but then we needed him to help patch concrete. And then the Kenwood Avenue project, uh, Kroll. Signed down the final estimate and no comments on it, so we processed that out of the ARPA fund and then the remaining was put towards rock.
That leaves, uh, full cash and we got a close ride. Yeah, full cash. So just talking about that ARPA fund, so some of them on here, January, July, there's six thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars left of the ARPA fund. Probably a little bit more for a June interest payment. So at some point, secondary roads will use the seven thousand roughly for some rock bids. So that can get zeroed out as soon as we can.
So right away in July, you want?
I would, I would keep making interest.
Or you wanna collect interest until?
October. We gotta get the reports done.
Okay, I'll go right away.
Any questions for Roman on engineer's department, secondary roads? If not, we can move on down to then discuss our remote plant potential projects. Um. So me and Roman, like he said, uh, did have a phone call with Jason Comesty. Here's two copies. I don't think I sent it out because I was gonna read it today. Thanks for the call this morning. Ray confirmed by email below that the first five percent of the wind turbine valuations rolled in on January first, two thousand twenty-five. So the county should certify debt by December first of twenty-five in order to set the frozen base value as of January first of twenty-four. As we discussed, you could carve certified planning, engineering fees related to their original plant, attorney fees under section one five of the U R P. I'll stop there. We did check, it's fifty thousand dollars. Up to fifty thousand is what we can do.
For the U R P?
Correct.
Not for other, we, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to amend the.
Correct. So the current concept, we can spend up to fifty thousand on attorney fees, engineering fees, all of this. A certification would be enough to set the frozen base, but it may not capture all of available TIF. You need to work with Travis Swires or Ray to determine the amount of TIF produced by the increased valuation and how much indebtedness you need to certify in order to capture one hundred percent of the available TIF, if that is the board's goal. Um, so then Roman worked on a list of architects.
I reached out on the service bureau. I reached out to several county engineers that I knew had projects in the last ten years. I've got a list of consultants, probably fifteen or twenty of them by now. I don't know if we need to send it out to all of them. We certainly can if we want that much reading, but, uh. Basically, I got a really good rubric for Blackhawk County. Twelve pages long. I'm gonna have to doctor it up for our project a lot. Hopefully by midweek I'd have that, send it to you guys and we can discuss it on Monday. I guess I'm just looking at how fast you wanna move here. I know we got what Jake just spoke about, but then also the process with the actual consultant. My, my vision here as far as if we are moving forward would be, um, probably sometime around July first or the following week, we would send the RFPs out to all these consultants. We would give them roughly a month's time. And in that month, they could do a site visit if they need. They could do phone calls if they have questions. Any questions that are answered, I would submit to all other bidders as far as keeping them on this team line. Um, and then have that letting, or the, the request proposals would be due late July, early August. The board could decide on if they wanna move with a certain one. Um, and then that way we could probably say that we plan to have a letting for the actual projects around that December, maybe November, maybe January.
Do you wanna talk about if you remember it all? I don't. Should I write it all down? What needs to be done before December first?
Do you remember what I told you after that phone call? I said, you might as well spoke Spanish or Chinese or something. I was having a hard time. Ray might know more.
The bond has to be sold before you can check that box. So that means a public hearing. Um, there could be a petition, um, against that public hearing. Um. We could use some of our capital project funds. So the worry is if you get the R P out and when the contractor can start the footings, the forms, when do they need money, right? So the issue's gonna be is do you wanna sell the bond before December first, hold onto the money in an interest-bearing account? And Jason did say some counties do.
Yeah, when he started talking about that, that sort of was over my head.
Some people do take that bond money at, say, example, six percent and reinvest it at four and a half, just so it's doing something. Uh, but that's why I wrote that last sentence. Does this board want to capture, I think roughly three twenty?
I can't remember what it was.
Three twenty, three forty.
We calculated that based on current levy rates, post levy rates and.
So it's around, it's above three hundred, but lower than three.
Yeah.
Do we wanna capture that all?
And you can, and you can put in your, what you're gonna do as far as, let's say, I object three hundred and twenty, you can say it's three hundred and forty.
Correct.
That way you, you can, you know, recapture all of it. If you say three hundred and it brings in three fifty, you don't get that extra fifty, so.
So, um. Ray can re-figure that with the current levy rates.
I would do that.
To know exactly what we think is gonna come in. Um. I think Roman's doing a good job of, you know, picking five or six, um, architects, trying to keep them local, some of them.
Oh, they all, they all have an office in Iowa for the most part. Um. I guess a lot of talking, but I got a lot of don't use this person or this company and I got a lot of, we had very good luck with these and I got, they were okay. That was one that I laughed about. So we're definitely gonna send it out to the ones that I heard very good reviews on and then yes, there are some that are more local than others. That I guess I would suggest.
Roman did hold a question being on the phone call of Friday. The west side building is not part of this.
Yeah.
This is strictly the office slash lab.
The west department, the storage facility would be twenty twenty-eight or at some point. Which I think I gathered from you guys as well, for one, it's gonna, that's gonna cost a lot more and I learned a lot as far as one, uh, county had an issue with selecting a consultant not structured like that storage facility. And they didn't check fire code and then the county had to put an eight hundred thousand dollar sprinkler system in, or they could have put walls partitioning every day. So I guess I, I'm with you guys. Let's get our feet wet. Plus I don't know as far as the, you know, our bond that we'd have to, the debt we'd have to incur and the revenue that TIF's bringing in, you might be extending your interest a lot further with adding that cost. And on the same token, we can operate without interfering with our materials testing and all that stuff that we got going on. That would be the biggest issue to the break room here in the courthouse if I put an oven in there.
You also gotta visit the city to see the setbacks.
I talked to Casey this morning. It's thirty feet up the frontage, fifteen feet up the sides. Um, our existing fence is approximately seventeen feet up the property line. Um, I'm gonna try to find the pins. We might have to have a survey done. He mentioned that, some of the utility stuff, talked to him. There's no requirement on, you know, the building has to match the other buildings, which I don't know how much input you guys want on that. Like even interior furnishings, I mean, the trim, are we putting trim at the base for it? I would probably advise it. If you're gonna put sheet rock in, you probably wanna cover that up, but, you know. Like I said before, we don't wanna make a Taj Mahal, but I also don't want it to look like it's an incomplete building. You know, the roof material, how is that gonna work if we're doing steel on the walls, steel on the ceiling? Is that gonna interfere with, we're gonna have to get boosters in there? Do you want seamless tin? Do you want steel shingles? It's, it's a lot of stuff to figure out, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I don't know how much direction the board wants in that, or you want me to just keep costs low and build a facility that is a complete facility. We talked about having a storm shelter slash, that's where our I T and our machine room would be, that could fit at least as many people that are employed in that office. I would highly advise we do that when we build the west storage bay, because right now in a tornado, we're, we're in a building. So. But I mean.
Yeah, how much involvement? I mean, I can do so much, but I, I always feel that I don't have the authority to do so much, so. If you guys wanna have a committee together or help Roman give ideas so he can bring back a complete.
Or you just want me to move forward and then I can come to you and you can say, I don't think you need that, or you should change that if that's what you wanna do. I don't really want five people sitting at a table. I just built a house with my wife. We did pretty good. We're still married. But I mean, five people trying to make a decision on something little ends up taking too much time.
I agree.
Well, we don't, we don't really know what you need there. Well, we don't, we don't really know what you need there, so that's the way I'd rather have, during the, I've got a cracked beard.
But I like to keep as low as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's.
And I did tell you to visit with the IT daddy to make sure you have outlets in every spot where there could be a potential desk, because it's easier to put in.
Well, making sure our data, you know, the fiber there is all that can be adequate for our needs, which I assume.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll just give an update on where we're at, to get the consultants ready in that time.
So I will bring you guys the RFP, probably next Monday. I will send it to you when it's done. You can review it. I will also send it to David for his concurrence or. Changes, whatever you think. We can review it, and then if you guys authorize it, I think I'm planning on sometime after that sending it out, and I'll update the, update it as needed.
And on my end, I guess we'll keep Travis in the loop, and then if we get the numbers from Ray and see where Travis thinks we. Potential could be at sometime in August, September of letting the project and then going out for.
Because I have no idea what these consultants are gonna propose for a cost to do this. Shoot a number from the hip, but I'm not gonna do it, because I'm not gonna run.
Jason did ask in a phone call if we had any money set aside, and I think we do in capital projects to start with something. If an architect needs funds, and then have the bond pay us back. That is okay.
But, you know, as far as the actual, if we are gonna move forward with building it, are you trying to capture this current year's, or are we gonna be in next year? Because can't start that project, won't start till March or April if we do let it.
I'm not gonna capture it all, just because it's so.
Yeah.
But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea to capture it all, and if we have to reinvest it temporarily.
Even if they start in March, they're gonna lose some money.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because if it goes rate ten percent, so say six hundred thousand the following year?
Yeah, 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 so you double what the first year is.
Correct, so.
So on that same token, if you want to capture that subsequent year, do we need to be thinking about what's?
I think if that's what this board wants to do, let's. Let it go back, and we capture only twenty-two, twenty-four percent.
So I'll go back to the major projects, anything that's gonna involve the RV corps engineers, the DNR as far as the bridge. Anything that's gonna involve project development with DOT. That's not something we can just say, hey, we're six months out. We would like to do this, but local projects. Some of our smaller bridges that we do with our own crews, I mean, if you're looking to capture, I would still need, I'd say that six months would be the absolute deadline, because we still would have to have lettings for steel.
Everything on that, but. I think we start with something small, like I think we have the consensus, and, and see where. Have a talk again November, December, for the next December first, check that.
Okay, that'd be a good time, because we're in budget. You're getting close, so that would be.
That gives you a whole year of a project.
At least know what's coming. Just might ask people surveying in January, spring a slot hammer to get through that stream, right? Guess I'll, I'll say you guys should see that this week. Again, six county meetings on Thursday, if you're available.
All right, thank you. Um, did we all do the county assignments?
I got a lot to do, so. At Interco Board meeting Thursday afternoon. We approved the financials for the Interco Board and the R T C Board. Reviewed the grants that have came in since the first year. I don't legislate a update. We did look at the preliminary budget. And that is, it's a little bit on hold, because money was taken out that was apparently been promised, and it never happened, and money. Just here, but now they think it's gonna get backfilled, so they're still kind of working on the, on the budget. Our due certica, we should see the invoice in July. I'm supposed to watch for that.
Just an FYI, let me know, please, on July fourteenth is the four H achievement show. Last year, we did not go into session until one o'clock. If you guys have a problem with that, let me know. Comes out some of the family members that are showing in that day. Travis, right? July fourteenth is the date. Otherwise. I did have a commit assignment, forgot about it, but we will have that next week for a potential closed session for county security issues.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Future agenda items?
Yes.
I would like, uh. Next Monday, if we could, start to discuss and try to finalize a solar farm ordinance. I've got it pretty well wrapped up, except for just a few specifics. That I would like to discuss with you folks on that day, and how you'd like those things addressed. I will give a list of those items to you this week. On, uh. Some of that, like fencing, doesn't help, what, you wanna specify the height of the fence? You know, the maintenance, ground cover. Do a matter if they're pulling out what, pulling in soil that you're gonna utilize, that they're gonna pull out production or not. That kind of thing. You want that included. So I'll give a list of all of that to you. Glad I tried and get that pinched up. You've had a lot of, I've had a lot of telephone activity, and corresponds with, I bet you at least five in the last two weeks.
They're coming.
So. So tack that on, and that includes you, but be prepared, I will send that list out to you this week.
All right. Scott, you still got a motion?
Yep.
Is there a, Travis?
Yeah.
Motion by Scott, second by Travis to adjourn. Eleven seventeen, all papers say aye. Aye, play opposed. Isaac is absent. Motion is carried.
Should we put that on eleven eighteen?
Eleven eighteen, all right.